Okay, welcome to the City of Milpitas Planning Commission meeting. Oral public comments may only be provided during the Planning Commission meeting in person. All comments provided shall be limited to three minutes or less determined by the Chair. All public members will be limited to one comment per agenda item and one comment for non-agenda items. Members of the public may submit written comments by email prior to the meeting. Okay, and now we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and now we will... May I ask our Recording Secretary, Ms. Medina, to kindly take roll call?
Thank you, Vice Chair Medina Ashby, and good evening and Happy New Year, Planning Commissioners and staff. I will take attendance, starting with Chair Albana, which is... she is absent. Today Commissioner Awatsi is also absent. Commissioner Culkins?
Here.
Commissioner Kong?
Here.
Commissioner Gupta?
Here.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, conflict of interest, Attorney Creach?
Thank you, Chair. I ask the Chair and every other member of the Commission whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Commissioner Kong?
None.
Commissioner Culkins?
None.
Commissioner Gupta?
None.
Mister... Commissioner... I'm sorry, Vice Chair Medina Ashby? Thank you.
Thank you. I further ask the Chair and every other member of the Commission to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the City on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from any development project applicant for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Commissioner Kong?
None.
Commissioner Culkins?
None.
Commissioner Gupta?
None.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
None.
Thank you, Chair. Let the record reflect no report conflicts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Also, I wanted to mention that Commissioner Galong is also not present this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Okay, now we'll move on to election of Chair and Vice Chair for 2025. Do I have a nomination?
I would like to nominate Parveen Gupta for Chair.
I second.
You don't need a second for the nomination. If there are any other nominations, then we could take those. And then, once all nominations are received, you could have discussion, or you could call for a vote once discussion is complete.
Okay, got it. Do we have any other nominations? This Commissioner Gupta, what... you accept the nomination?
Yes, I accept the nomination.
Okay, perfect. Do we want to discuss? I'm good with him, too. Okay.
Then you'd need a motion, a motion and a second to approve in that roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to approve Commissioner Gupta as the new Vice Chair. New Chairperson.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we have a vote?
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Culkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we'd move on for nomination for Vice Chair.
Okay, we're moving on to the nomination for Vice Chair. Do we have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Culkins for the Vice Chair.
I second.
You don't need a second nomination. It may be beneficial to indicate if the nomination be accepted and then discussion or any other nominations.
You accept? Nice, okay. Let's have a vote. Oh, yeah, we need a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay. Second the motion? Shall we have a vote?
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Culkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then I would recommend, before we commence with further business, to maybe rearrange... Well, actually, do we have...
It's...
Yeah. It might be beneficial simply for everyone to keep their seats and for Commissioner Gupta... Sorry, Chair Gupta to preside from his seat. Unless you want to rearrange seating. It's up... it's your meeting, Commissioner Gupta... oh, sorry, Chair Gupta. The only reason why it might be more complicated to rearrange the chamber is the name tags are done electronically, and I don't think IT staff can change those. So it may be beneficial for everyone, if they're willing, to simply keep their seats and to operate that way.
Do I continue now?
Yes, you do. It's your meeting.
Okay. So, next item is approval of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second? I second.
Okay, we take a roll call about that?
Yes, Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Culkins?
Aye.
Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Oh, Vice Chair Culkins. Chair Gupta and Commissioner...
I can't get used to this.
I know, Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so the agenda passes. Our next item will be approval of the past last minutes of the meeting. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Can we take a vote? Thank you, let's take a vote.
It's Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Vice Chair Culkins?
Aye.
Chair Gupta? And Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next item is if there are any announcements from the Planning Commissioners? Any announcement from Planning Commissioners? And then, any announcement for Planning Director?
No announcements.
Okay, we move on. The next item is public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that doesn't appear on today's agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less at the Chair's discretion. When called to speak, you are encouraged to state your name for the record. As an item not listed on the agenda, no action can be taken. However, the Planning Commissioner may instruct the staff to place the item on a future meeting agenda.
Commissioner...
May I invite members of the public to address the Commission?
Chair, we have no speaker cards for any items that are not agendized.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? None? Can we take a vote to close the public forum?
No vote is needed to close the public forum. That's simply to close the public hearing for items requiring public hearings. So you simply move on.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, next item is... Next item is 10... number 10-1. Presentation about... is it Pulte or Pulte? How do you pronounce it? Pulte Home Affordable Apartments Modification. So, Michael Fassati is going to make a presentation.
It's on. We're looking good. I'm also getting used to the new setup, so... Thank you, Chair Gupta. Thank you, Planning Commissioners, fellow staff, and members of the public. My name is Michael Fassati. I'm a senior planner here with the City of Milpitas, and I'll be presenting a new business item 10-1, Pulte Homes Affordable Apartments Modification. Can we have the slides, please? Sure, no, sorry, members of the public, we're just still getting used to the new system. There we go. Thank you, Recording Secretary Medina. Let me get to the next slide. Thank you so much. Pulte Homes has partnered with Waterford Property Company to modify the previously approved apartment building, which will host up to 75 affordable apartment units. The following image is a rendering of the new proposed apartment building. Next slide, please. Here's a satellite view of the property that we'll be talking about this evening. The yellow highlighted portion is the portion that we're specifically speaking about. This image is older. That building is longer there. The property has been demolished. The site is located close to the northern part of Milpitas, south of Dixon Landing Road, and west of California Circle. Next slide, please. The map above demonstrates the project site's zoning designation. The purple area is MXD Mixed Use Residential, which is also the same zoning district to the east. The red areas are commercial zoning districts, and the green is a park and open space, which is on the other side of the freeway. Next slide, please. What I'm going to do is provide you a bit of a background of what we'll be discussing tonight. On November 7th, 2023, the City of Milpitas City Council approved a development consisting of 131 town home condominium residential units, up to 51 feet in height, and a 75-unit residential apartment building that was up to 77 feet in height, for a total of 206 residential units. We refer to this project as the 1355 California Circle Project. This was submitted by Pulte Homes at 1355 California Circle. The image above is the site plan of the 6.7-acre site. Pulte is on their way to developing those townhomes. They're currently working with the Building Department, trying to obtain building permits. But the approved apartment building, as shown in this image with the red hatched area, has not been developed as of yet. The remainder of the presentation is to kind of discuss the proposed apartment building that Pulte is now proposing. Next slide, please. The picture in the upper left is the previously approved apartment, while the picture on the right, the bottom right, is the proposed design. The previously approved apartment was in an L-shaped design, six stories in height, with a concrete look ground floor base. The new design is more of a U-shaped design, lower in height because it's five stories, with more of a brick veneer ground floor base. Next slide, please. Here is the southern elevation of the existing and proposed apartment. The existing, the one that was previously approved, is on top. The proposed is on the bottom. The existing apartment building includes 75 affordable units with a mixture of studios, one and two bedrooms. The affordability of the existing apartments include 31 apartments reserved for low-income households and 44 apartments reserved for moderate-income households. The proposed design at the bottom also has 75 units, and that's what's being discussed this evening, but has a different unit mix. There's 31-bedroom units, 21 two-bedroom units, and 24 three-bedroom units. The proposal will reserve all 75 units. It's the City's understanding. All 75 units will be reserved for either low or very low-income households. Although, well, there is a condition in the resolution. The City understands that there's agreement between Pulte and Milpitas Unified School District regarding the right of first refusal for MUSD employees at the above-mentioned apartments, assuming those employees qualify for low or very low-income households. This agreement remains unchanged between this approved amendment and this permit. Next slide, please. The following images are the first-floor plans of the 2023 entitlement and the proposed design. In 2023, the apartment had 85 parking spaces. 29 of those parking spaces in the upper-left-hand corner were exposed. We refer to them as uncovered. The new design, even though it's the same amount of units, has actually 86 parking spaces. All of them are covered because of the U-shaped design being proposed. Next slide, please. Both projects have two outdoor amenity spaces. The previously approved project has not only two outdoor amenities, one to the front and one to the rear, but it also has a gym and a clubhouse. But the proposed apartment has two amenity areas, which are larger in size compared to the previous apartment, and three amenity rooms, which could be used as a club room, a game room, a clubhouse, or a gym. Next slide, please. Since the project has more than 10% of the total units designated as affordable, it qualifies for the State of California Density Bonus Permit. The Density Bonus Permit allows a developer to ask for concessions, waivers, or incentives from the development standards held by the City, as long as the developer can prove the concession waiver or incentive supports the project to remain affordable. In 2023, the applicant received multiple waivers to develop the project. This is discussed in the staff report. Since the proposed apartment building remains affordable, the applicant has requested multiple waivers and incentives for the City to consider, which include the following: a waiver to develop to the front setback, a waiver to develop to the side setback, a waiver to go above the 45-foot height limit, which would typically require a conditional use permit, and a parking reduction that would allow 86 parking spaces, consistent with the parking minimums for the State Density Bonus Law. The applicant has provided justification of the proposed waivers as attachment D in your staff report. Next slide, please. The Planning Department routed the project plans to the following departments for technical review. Those departments approved the project and conditioned it accordingly. Next slide, please. A notice for this project to move forward was published in the Milpitas Post, and a sign was placed on the property informing residents that this project will be discussed this evening. The City also sent out 254 postcards informing residents and property owners of the project. We did receive four comments, all from Milpitas Unified School District staff, supporting the project. The comments were from the following individuals, because I think they should be noted: the MUSD President Cheryl Jordan, California School Employees Association President Sherry Ames, Milpitas Teachers Association President Clarissa Isbell, and Milpitas Management Association President Shin Song. Per the comments, they're all supportive of the project. All those emails have been provided to the Planning Commission to review. It also should be noted, the amendment will adhere to both the new resolution that's being proposed and the agreement of what we refer to as Resolution 9283, which has conditioned the following language. Typically, the City stays out of negotiations between a separate entity and a private developer, but there was an agreement to add the following language into the resolution when it was approved in 2003. And in that condition, I think it's Condition Number 26, there's language that says, "The permity agrees to work with the City Attorney's Office to include within the Affordable Housing Agreement language that would be benefit to qualified employees for the Milpitas Unified School District in securing rental opportunities for both low and moderate-income units to be provided." Next slide, please. In order to recommend approval for this project, or all discretionary projects in the City of Milpitas, findings must be made for the Site Development Permit Amendment. Additional findings for the Density Bonus Permit and the Affordable Housing Ordinance Exception will have also been included. Because the project has a Density Bonus Permit and Affordable Housing Ordinance Exception, the Planning Commission is acting as the advisory agency. The City Council has the authority to approve it. So if you were to approve this project, you would be recommending that a City Council approve the project. Next slide, please. The 1355 California Circle Project had an environmental impact report, also known as an EIR, that was certified by City Council on that date. SEQUA Section 15162 states that when an EIR has been certified, no subsequent EIR shall be prepared for the project unless the lead agency determines there is a substantial change or new information of substantial importance has occurred. Staff provided the Planning Commission a memorandum stating the analysis the City conducted, which did not determine that neither a substantial change or new information provided to require subsequent environmental analysis was necessary. In summary, the previously approved mitigation monitoring plan that was approved by certifying the EIR will adequately still address the environmental concerns that the Planning Commission recommends City Council to approve this project. The apartments are relatively same, doing the same use. They're just different in design and unit mix. Next slide, please. So in closing, staff recommends the Planning Commission use their advisory authority to open the public hearing to receive comments, close the public hearing, consider the exemption in accordance with SEQUA, and adopt Resolution Number 25-019... Oh, I'm sorry, 25-003, recommending the City Council approve the Site Development Permit Amendment and Density Bonus Permit, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. This concludes staff summary of the project. I'd like to introduce Jim Sullivan, representing Pulte Homes. Jim has brought an additional Pulte Home representative, I believe, and, if I'm not mistaken, the consulting architect and engineer and members of Waterford Property Company, which are part of the developing partners, are available virtually, if you have any questions for them. Thank you for your time.
I have a question for City Attorney Creach.
Yes.
Can you point out the language in the resolution specific to the first right of refusal for MUSD?
It's not a... it is not language that states a first right of refusal. So the... I think the term that you're looking for is Condition 26.
I could not locate it. I was flipping through the resolution, and I cannot identify... Under conditions of approval, Number 26 was pointing to Affordable Housing Agreement, and it only states...
That's correct. So if you read down to the last sentence, furthermore, permity agrees to work with the City Attorney's Office to include within the Affordable Housing Agreement language that would be of benefit to qualified employees in the Milpitas Unified School District in securing rental opportunities for both low and moderate-income units to be provided.
I'm sorry, it's not on our copy.
If I may, through the Chair, I believe Commissioner Kong is referring to... She's referring to Resolution 25-003, the Planning Commission Resolution. Exhibit 2, Commissioner Kong, is Resolution 9283, that Attorney Creach and I'm referring to.
Okay, let me look for it.
And where that condition is stated.
Okay, you're there. All right.
Yeah. We understand, we, Planning Department, understand that the Planning Commission is typically the approval authority, but in order to kind of create this, we have to write multiple resolutions because you're approving the resolution that will be going to council. That's why it can get a bit confusing. But to answer your question, Commissioner Kong, as Mr. Creach stated, Condition Number 26 in that resolution
I found it.
states that agreement.
Yeah, so I'm bringing up this question because it is still a little bit vague because it leaves the language out from this resolution. And whereas the letter that we have from the school district superintendent was specifically asking for language to be included. So I'm trying to understand where this additional agreement would be documented, if it's not part of...
So there are two different parts, as I understand it. There is this condition, which reflects the condition that was originally approved by the City Council at its hearing, which is being proposed for retention. And it was a condition which the developer expressly agreed to being added. Separately, the... my understanding from the last... when the original project was approved, the developer made a representation about entering into an agreement with the Milpitas Unified School District to be able to use these housing opportunities to support the Milpitas Unified School District and their employees in trying to find housing. That would be a private agreement that the City would not be privy to. It would have to comply with all the City's laws, including the Affordable Housing Ordinance. But the terms and subject in that agreement is one that would be between the school district and this particular developer. And this... and nothing in here controls the terms of that. That was a representation that the developer had made about what they were doing privately. In terms of what's actually included in the proposal for conditions of approval, this is the relevant condition, and it's meant to reflect what the City Council approved and which the developer expressly consented to.
Okay, understood. Do we have representative from the project that may be able to answer about, you know, the separate agreement between the company and the district?
Oh, we do, Commissioner Kong.
Are they online?
No, they... I believe if you have any additional questions for me, I could have the Pulte representative come.
I do have additional questions, but perhaps we could get that answered first?
Yeah, I can come back.
Is that okay?
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Congratulations, and thank you, Michael, for a wonderful presentation. I think that you covered everything. My name is Jim Sullivan, and I am representing Pulte Homes. Pulte Homes acquired the entire property, as Michael had mentioned, shortly after the City Council had approved it. The developer that we were working on the original 75-unit apartment site with was not able to move forward, and so Pulte has now gone under contract with Waterford Properties, a very large and reputable nonprofit builder. Were not able to utilize, basically, the architecture from the previous developer. And so the new developer actually hired a firm, KTGY, extremely notable architect here in California, to design a project to fit on the same-sized site. The project essentially is lower in height by about 18 feet. So as Michael had mentioned, instead of the six-story building that was approved, this will be a five-story building. And then the other thing that we're quite excited about is, when he was talking about the unit mix prior, it was studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. Waterford, it's important for them to obtain three-bedroom units as well, knowing that... knowing that that satisfies for families a rental income. So with that, the other, I think, important thing to bring up is that the previous, as Michael pointed out, kind of the open recreational space in the project was about 11.7% of the site of what had been approved before, and this new project actually is at 25% of the site. So we're increasing the bedroom count, keeping the same number of units, but increasing the bedroom count, flattening the building. Of course, we had to kind of enlarge its footprint slightly. And then the one new, I'll call it density bonus request that we're making, all the other ones still apply, but on the side yard setback, and I wanted to point out, we had to shift the building away from the commercial side closer to where the townhomes and condos are going to be, so that the fire department could be within 30 feet of that side of the building. So it was actually a fire department request that kind of made that, that density bonus occur. As the city attorney and Michael, I think, pointed out, there was an original agreement that was approved when, when the first project, when our project last year got, got approved, or a little bit more than a year ago, that working with the city in drafting the affordable housing agreement, we would do everything in our power to create beneficial opportunities for Milpitas Unified School District. That still remains our commitment to do. Um, I know I've had several conversations with, with both the board and with the superintendent, and actually hoping to get this approved and, and would, would welcome the opportunity to have Waterford and Pulte sit down again with these new plans to talk about what we can do for the Milpitas Unified School District faculty and employees.
So on that topic, so there hasn't been any written agreement as of today, is that correct?
No, it's basic, yeah. We haven't, yeah, I mean, we kind of need, we would have done it. Obviously, it has to be done before construction would start. Uh, I think that the city requires that agreement to be in place. You know, it's a condition either of a building permit. And so, but I mean, and hopefully, we're not going to wait around until we get the building permit, which might be, you know, eight to 10 months from now. We would, we would welcome, as soon as, assuming that we can get this project approved through the planning commission and the city council, we would, we would work with the city to, to then put the deed restriction in place and the language necessary that would be of benefit to the school district.
Okay, so it will be under the official legal document would be in the deed restriction, is that...
Yeah, I don't want to get too much ahead of myself with regard to the city attorney, what, what, what's required from the city on the deed restriction, but I know that we are fully willing to sit down, as the city attorney had mentioned, and have a separate agreement with the school district as well.
So, and to, to be very clear on this, there may be parts of whatever agreement proposal that MUSD and the developer come to agreement upon, that may be legal terms that could be reflected and included into that affordable housing agreement. Um, there may be parts of their private business dealings that would not be something that the city would necessarily be a party to, or that would be incorporated in that agreement, in which case my understanding is their intention is to include whatever that is in a, in some kind of a separate agreement. And then, and then in terms of all this, it would have to be consistent with our affordable housing ordinance and our policies and practices and everything else according to that. So that would be the legal review in terms of what the city could be a party to.
Yeah, so I think, I really think that it's, it's going to be, I want to work with, or we want to work with, you know, MUSD, but we also want to make sure that we don't run afoul of anything with regard to the city and, you know, I mean, their requirements. And also there's, you know, I mean, the state, you know, because there will be state funding involved too, that we have to take into account.
All right. Um, so on that subject matter, is there any, I mean, what was agreed upon in the past? Was it 50% of the low-income units, or is it, I mean, do you have a number in mind?
Yeah, so I, I think originally it was, you know, I know that there was a minimum of 31 of the 75 units would be low-income. The rest could be moderate or low, and you could always go below, you know, the limit. You can't go above necessarily, right? So I want to work with the school district to find out their qualifications. I know that we had kind of touched upon that, you know, the salaries that they make to make sure that they qualify, and even like on the very low, they might, you know, they might not be able to qualify for very low rentals because you're at 30 to 50%. It's, it's all based on, you know, percentages of the county median income. But what was agreed upon was we would do everything in our, in our benefit. And I, I'm trying to remember, it was over a year ago, probably 18 months ago, and I thought that my conversations were, you know, picking, you know, 25 to 30. So I don't know, I don't remember if it was 50%, you know, but I remember that it was, uh, you know, closer to like a third of the units. But I, I also want to be very clear that I was adamant that it was, you know, more of not setting aside in perpetuity forever. I mean, you know, assuming it was kind of more like if you have somebody available that qualifies that can move in, you know, we'd like to give you a local preference of that, right? And, and, and so I think that what's going to happen in the future, how I envisioned it, is the person from Waterford as places, well, first they have to lease everything up, but then as places become open, you know, there's a notification that kind of goes to the school district first, if you will.
And has this type of arrangement been done by Waterford in other projects before? This is the first time they're doing it here in Milpitas?
You know, I would, I would defer to either Orin or Sean, if they're available, Liz. Can one of them answer that question?
This is Sean Rossen with Waterford. Can, hopefully everyone can hear me okay.
So Sean, I don't know if you had heard the question.
Yes.
But have you guys had experience working with like local preference with school districts?
We have, yes.
In your previous projects?
Uh, yes, we have. So in our affordable housing portfolio,
Are you unmute because we cannot hear Sean?
We saw your name but didn't hear anything.
It, it says I'm unmuted.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, I, I apologize. Um, so thank you. This is Sean Rossen. I'm the co-founder of Waterford Property Company. We have about 7,500 units in our existing affordable housing portfolio in California, and to, to your question, a large percentage of those have what we refer to as local preference. And local preference means that you work with the, the local jurisdiction, so whether it be city, county, to come up with essentially a first preference. So we have cities where we have first preference for teachers. We have also for, for members of first responders, and so it's something that we're very familiar with. Uh, the one thing is, is that for financing purposes, you need to make sure that, that local preference language does not violate fair housing laws. But in this case, as part of the regulatory agreement, so when we apply for our tax credit financing and bond financing through the state of California, so we'd go to, they call it California Tax Credit Allocation Committee for tax credits, and then the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee, SIDLAC, for bond financing, we have a regulatory agreement that's part of that, and then that gets recorded on the property. And in that regulatory agreement, there is local preference for, for, in this instance, for the school district. Now, one thing I want to, I want to bring up is that we will, we can work with the school district to have a minimum unit count that we say will be essentially a right of first refusal and a preference. Um, one thing that we cannot have is, for instance, let's just, I'm just using a hypothetical number. Let's say that that, that unit count would be 30, 30 units. If those were to remain vacant, we can't have that. So for financing purposes, our lenders and tax credit investors would mean that if there were only, you know, let's say 27 teachers in the school district that wanted to live there, we had three vacant units. We would have the right to be able to rent those units to the next in line outside of the, the local preference. Because, you know, it's, it's not in anyone's best interest to have vacant units. Uh, but that all being said, we're very familiar with this, and we've done it on multiple projects throughout the state of California.
Thank you so much. I think that really answers a lot of the question I had in terms of the legal instrument and the way that it's going to be coordinated.
And that, and that was my conversation with the district and the board, you know, kind of before was, it would, you know, almost kind of like the, you know, we go to you first. If you don't have anybody, it doesn't mean you lose it forever, you know, but then we go to other needing people that can move in, and then another thing opens up, you know, go back. So I mean, we're looking at it to be a, you know, kind of a perpetual arrangement, or I don't know what the term is, 55 years, you know, however long the deed restriction is for, that it's going to last that long.
So it's on that topic about duration in the, I remember reading in the memo staff report, it's 30 years? But you mentioned 55?
No, it's not. It's 55.
Oh, interesting, because I remember jotting down that it's 30 years.
This, this is Sean Rossen again, and so the regulatory agreement will remain in place for 55 years, so all the covenants that are party to that, that reg agreement, which governs the affordability, the local preference, that will all be in place for the term of the regulatory agreement, which is 55 years.
All right, that's even better. Thank you.
And Chair, if I may, just to, just to make sure that the conversation is being full. So Milpitas' ordinance does contemplate that these units would be offered on a lottery system. So that lottery system has weight for certain kinds of factors, including Milpitas residents, former residents who have been displaced, households with children enrolled in MUSD, and, and other kinds of factors. So the city's, the city's ability to be part of this, and, and the, any kind of an agreement would have to be in accord with the city's affordable housing ordinance, and the city's ability to contribute to that. But there is obviously a wide range of ways in which the developer and the school district could work together to find opportunities that they'd be both comfortable with to achieve the, to achieve that condition and to also achieve what I think they are representing, which is a willingness to engage in that. It would just be up to the developer, working with the school district, to come up with those proposals. And to the extent that our staff needs to be involved, we can.
And that, that is my commitment here tonight, that we plan on doing it, so.
Thank you. Thank you for, you know, that word given to us. Um, I do have a separate question away from this first right of refusal regarding the front yard setback that you are requesting for exemption.
Yes.
Since it's been reduced to four feet, nine inches.
Yeah, so the, the funny thing is that we had a, we had a bounty, excuse me, a density bonus request before the, the city's code typically requires the front yard setback to be between, to be a minimum of eight feet and a maximum of 15 feet. So our original plan that was approved, actually the face of the building was over 15 feet away from back of sidewalk. That's where the, you know, the kind of the property line is. And so we had to get a density bonus because it was too far setback. And so now we kind of brought, brought it forward under the new plan in order to reduce the height, add the more bedrooms, we pushed forward. But I will say that that element, that's, you know, that basically five feet behind the sidewalk, is just a one-story kind of brick building element. The main part of the building, the living area, if you will, is, I think, 13.8 feet setback. So the, the majority of the building, this is just like a projection, if you will, and it's about three feet shorter than what your minimum requires it to be. So, yeah.
Do we have any rendering of that?
Uh, yeah, if you can bring back up the slide showing just, I think, the, the front yard or the front. Okay, so this, this isn't the rendering, but it's the floor plan, so you can see where the blue and the pink were on the first floor plan. That was basically, you know, I think 18 feet behind the sidewalk. And then you see the pink part, that's the four feet, nine inches behind the sidewalk. But the rest of the building, you know, the main part, the living area, if you will, with five floors, is, you know, within the setback limit. So this is, you know, I, I look at this as, oh, here we go.
Okay, yeah.
You can kind of see the projection up front, and that's not, you know, four feet, nine inches away from the street. That's, you know, I think that there's a, I forgot if it's 10 or 15 feet from face of curb to the back of sidewalk, so you're about 20 feet away from the actual street or the curb and gutter.
And is that going to be high-traffic area, foot-traffic area?
Uh, I don't think there, there is a crosswalk that kind of is not in front of the apartments, but that, that are in front of the townhomes that goes across California Circle. Um, and I think that there's maybe a walk, like a pathway that kind of walks through the existing. Can you go back to, I think it was maybe the second slide that shows like the area? California Circle, yeah, so you can kind of see where the apartment building is. It's just commercial buildings kind of to the north of us, and there's, you know, the gas station, and I think that there's a hamburger place. Right across the street is the BAPs Church. And then where you see the townhomes kind of in the lower right-hand section, there is a crosswalk that's kind of highlighted in white that you can see. And that kind of runs through this, or connects to the center of our, you know, building that's kind of being built right now, the 131 townhomes and condos.
Yeah, so the reason why I'm asking this question is I wanted to understand if that new configuration, when you go back to that floor plan of the pink area that is being pushed forward, closer to the sidewalks, whether there would be like a, like a main entrance to the building, right? If it's a main entrance to the building being so close to the sidewalk, then there would be a lot of foot traffic going in and out of the building from there?
Yeah, I, I think...
To have better protection for, from the cars, from the vehicles that's passing by?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. You know, we don't, all of the residents of, of this unit, of these units will be parking underground. Uh, so it's, you know, it's covered parking, as Michael had, had mentioned. So it's really just, you know, either guests, you know, that would kind of be coming by who can park, and they would be walking on the sidewalk and then going to, I think, the front of the building, and, you know, obviously it'll be a secured building where, you know, they have to, I don't know, you know, call the people to get buzzed in, you know, or what have you. So we don't, I, I, you know, I can have our architects talk to that, but I, I don't foresee a problem with like a congregation of people milling around out front.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so, yeah, that's most of my question. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I have some questions, but come in the end. So any other questions? Michael? There's more than that. You go ahead.
I would like to say thank you. The project looks really good. Sorry you had to go through the new developer or, you know, new team for doing all that. I have a little experience with that, so that's no fun, but thanks for sticking with it, and I like the design and everything you've done, the, the bigger play area, so to speak, for everybody, so good job on that, and thanks for bringing it to Milpitas.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, um, the question I have more is for Michael, if you're okay. Um, it's just a kind of, you know, 75 units, 86 parking spaces. Um it's just a kind of, you know, seventy five units, eighty six parking spaces, and we've got families in there. I realize, you know, they can get the waivers um and yeah, because of the density bonuses and stuff for that. But is that really enough parking? Is there, what's, where's overflow parking for this?
Um well, well, two things. One, uh there there's guest parking on the on the Pulte site, but uh that the proposed eighty five parking spaces, tha- that they follow the calculations from state density. So a lot of of affordable housing projects have these minimum parking requirements. Um it's it's a standard protocol with affordable housing projects. If if I have hearing you're right, you're asking like, well, if we have seventy five units, there's not enough parking spaces, um then we'll rely on the developer or the operator to to manage that appropriately. It's just parking costs up to forty thousand dollars per space. And an affordable housing developer has slim margins and recognizing that if they can create more unit without a parking space, by and by saving forty thousand dollars, the state gives them that ability to ask for that. And it's very difficult for the city to say, no, you can't because you don't have adequate parking, as long as they meet those minimum numbers.
Um, if I may, just to for clarifying correction, so the request here is for a waiver. Um the way the state density bonus law works is that it sets a minimum number, which will which may and infrequently is below the city's um requirement. Um that number, however, is higher than what's requested. I think it comes out to something like ninety six. And I think what's proposed is eighty six, something along those lines. And so the waiver that's being requested is that downsized. And then the qualifications for the waiver um have been laid out in the in the staff report.
One other thing, Commissioner Kong, just just to make sure we're open, there's 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 forty six guest parking spaces for the total project. That includes the Pulte side along with the apartment. I I'm kind of hesitant on on stating that, but that's the reality of it. There's forty six guest parking spaces. Um it none on that apartment parcel, it's all on the Pulte, the townhome parcel. So they're probably gonna be dedicated to um guests for the the townhomes.
Right, right. That, yeah, that was just my my kind of question, just looking at the the makeup of the units, you know, for this. Um, you know, it's just one of those, you know, people are gonna be parking on the street in the area around this, cuz I just don't, you know, we always have these parking comments and it's, um, we'll, I'll follow up later.
Maybe I'll add to that a little bit, since that's my favorite subject. Uh in even in your zoning uh document that we're gonna dis- update that we're gonna discuss soon, even with their recommendation, uh it comes to hundred and ten parking spots. So that's based on your zoning update.
Hmm.
So so you're actually kind of falling below the zoning update. Uh and uh just to give you actually uh actual case study i- in Fremont and Toll Brothers, they have a complex right across Bart, so, which normally would mean that you can even have higher density. But there, every apartment, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, four bedroom, they provide two parking spots. And and uh even with two parking spots for every apartment, still it's a big chaos over there because I know that, because I happen to own one of the units there. So I know that uh if people are going around and around trying to find parking, even two parking spots per apartment are not enough. So here you're talking about more like one point one eight or something, you know, so it's going to be a real problem. But I understand uh you're willing to take the risk, people are going to park on the streets and uh and then there will be, there will be a traffic jam and a lot of problems, so.
Well, I I just wanna remind the commission, these are affordable properties, affordable projects, you have to qualify. Maybe some of these people that do qualify, they can't afford a car, you know, and and so they'll have the ability to at least have a home.
Uh there there could be some of those, but typically people still have cars because they still have to move around. Maybe they'll have uh lower priced cars, but they still have cars.
Uh you know, I I did wanna go back to um Commissioner Kong, what one question that, and and it's it's hard to understand, the setback being proposed, i- it's not behind the curb, it's behind the sidewalk. There's a ten-foot sidewalk. So the congregation of people, um just there's a long distance between the bill, the front of the building and and the street. There's a good substantial amount of setback. I I just wanted to kind of speak at that.
It's just from the rendering, I mean, from the rendering as well as from the floor plan, it just looks extremely close to the sidewalk.
Oh, it it is close to the sidewalk, but that sidewalk is a good ten feet from the the curb, right? And 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 it all goes back to um just being a planner and kind of advocating for affordable housing. They they wanna get as much building as they can to get more people into those units and.
Cuz uh since we're talking back about that topic, I just noticed that from the original design, there was a great separation of the entrance. The entrance to the building is actually, you had steps, stairs to go up. But on the new design, it is flush, there is no great separation. So that's why I have concern about, will there be any safety issue if it's gonna be moved closer to the sidewalk? And then um if that's gonna be a main entryway to the building, will there be a lot of foot traffic again? That is just coming from my side, looking through the images.
I understand.
I appreciate your um detailed like uh clarification.
Sonia, you have any question? Then I can come to my question. Okay, so I want to talk about the impact fee uh on the main document that I read, not in your presentation. The impact fee calculations and I want to better understand the impact fees. Uh, right now you're charging impact fees for what you call Parkland impact fee. And then you have public arts fee, you know, public art, public arts fee is well understood. But isn't there some other type of impact which uh you may not be charging, like uh uh the effect on the on the schools uh 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 because even now the ratio of teachers to students already going up in Melpitas? Used to be supposed to be one to twenty and now in some schools one to twenty seven and, you know, uh in in that range. So so there should be impact on on the schools. So will that a consideration in terms of impact fee?
So not by the city of Melpitas, the M- Melpice Unified School District has a school impact fee based on new construction. So it's administered by the school district, not the city.
Oh, I see. Okay. So that's that's covered, you're saying?
Uh not in our resolution, um maybe Director.
And that happens through the building permit process after after this, after planning entitlement.
So so in I I, yeah, and let me do too. When someone wants to obtain a building permit, Jim, Rick and Repolti, I wanna get my building permit. He issues it to the city, we'll review it. One of Jim's requirements, and and maybe tell me if I'm wrong, is he has to go to the school district to, which the school district calculates their impact fee, and he needs to demonstrate to the city that he's paid that impact fee.
So that'll be on top of this fees or these fees?
Correct. Will it be written in this resolution? No, it will not. Will it be a requirement for the billing permit to be issued? Yes, it will.
What about the impact on the transportation in the city? Well, that impact is covered somewhere?
Oh, I don't believe the city has any road impact fees.
Yes, so the city has an impact fee for Calaveras. Um this project is not, they're not close enough to Calaveras. Some cities have a traffic impact fee that applies citywide, but the city of Melpitas does not.
Oh, I see. Okay. So uh still staying on this topic, uh uh on your uh handout that was sent, the report that was sent on page twenty nine, you give a table of impact fee calculation for uh Parkland?
Hmm.
Impact fee? I don't know if something you can probably not not be able to pull up on the screen, right? We can just talk about it, right?
Sure, are are you a- asking how it's calculated?
No, I mean, uh, it's not, how, I understand how it is calculated, but it seems to be something is not adding up there because you mentioned that uh every uh five, five, every thousand uh people is five acres, right? Five ac- and and uh based on that five acre calculation, uh you're, based on that, well, I don't have the table in front of me, so it's hard for me to figure out. But but if you look at the numbers, the calculation is not right. I mean, uh, the, if you base it on five acres, then it should be seven point one two five million. And then you take uh, um, you give some credit uh and points for seven point seven two acre, and if you take that into account, it still comes to a couple of million more than what you, what you are calculating. If it's based on uh that five acres calculation. I didn't make a copy. It's a big document.
If I may, um it's five acres per one thousand persons. So usually we would like try to estimate and generate a population increase that we'd expect from the project. And then we apply the five acres. So I'm not sure if that's what you did in your calculation, um.
Yeah, I don't, do you have that uh report, report, maybe?
Yeah, I, so as uh as the planning director Jay had mentioned, so what happens is uh the city looks at this density of project and says there will be two point four nine people per unit.
Right, right.
So so then you take the two point four nine times two hundred and six
Right.
units, and you get a population, right? And I I don't know what that exactly is, but so that number of people are assuming, and this was all in the E I R. That number of people are assuming to live in this development.
Okay.
And then that's gonna require a certain amount of park space under the city's ordinance.
Right.
And so the city does all of these calculations and then they present us. And then we're credited, so we have like the large, you know, kind of park space on the, you know, townhomes and the condominium sex side, which, by the way, we're opening up, um I think Pulte made that commitment to to do a public use- usement over it.
Right.
So it's, everybody can use it, um but it's maintained by the H O A. So it doesn't cost the city anything. So we're credited that amount back. And then the city has, and I don't know, they do it on a yearly basis, essentially a dollar amount that they charge per acre. So the total cost I wanted to say was like five point nine million. That was the calculation, I think, that the city had.
I understand the whole process. Uh I mean, what you're saying is I, that was not the issue, though. Uh, based on that two point four nine, per person per unit comes to five hundred and thirteen people.
Okay.
And uh and somewhere in the document says five acres uh per thousand people. So based on that five acre per thousand people, it comes to two point five six five acres.
Yeah.
And you get credit for point seven two acre. And if you do that calculation, uh it, the number is not matching, the the
Okay.
the one they calculate. On page twenty nine, maybe you can take another look at it.
Yeah, I I you you're saying point seven two. I thought that I recall, but I mean, it's been a long time, that it was like point eight seven. But I know that Pulte has already actually made a payment to the city of three point nine million dollars. So that was made several months ago to satisfy the uh I'll call it the Park in Luffy or the Park impact fee.
Yeah.
And and then if I if I can, Mr. uh Mr. Chair, just really quickly on your earlier comment just about the school fees. So the state of California, actually, they look at the impact of schools, and I think that they're different tiers. But the schools uh charge, and it's, I'm not sure if it's, you know, four dollars or five dollars per square foot of living space. And so as when we're getting our building permit, before the city will issue us our building permit, we have to go to the school, show them the number of units that we're gonna be planning on building, the square footage for each of those units, write them a check, they sign a form, we come back. And so I think that, a- again, I forgot the calculations, but I think it's uh maybe about a million dollars or so that will go as impact fees to the school.
So just take another look at that calculation, because I don't have the paperwork in front of me. But uh but I thought either the number is too high or too low, depending on where you see, uh whether it's five acres or three acres.
Yeah.
And uh the calculation, one case is too low, other cases too high.
Yeah, we'll take another look at it.
Yeah, just take another look at it. Uh so so just as a proper understanding, all the impact fees that, because there are five other impact fees listed, different kinds of fees. So altogether, uh what number are we talking about? How much you paid to the city for for your project?
Yeah, to the to the city, probably in the uh in the range of about five million dollars and to the school district, maybe an extra million dollars worth of impact fees. I mean, there's other fees, there's, you know, building permit fees uh that have to be paid. But the big one is the park fee.
Yeah, big one is the park fee, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other comments? No? Okay. I think we have taken a lot of time here on on that subject. Do we have any comments from the public on this project?
Chair Gupta, I received a um a rendering that um that the applicant uh team shared that they would like to share with you. And I'll put that on the screen right now.
Hello, I sent in that application. I'll just chime in if you can hear me. You're sent in that rendering?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. Um thank you for um the the time tonight. My name is Megan Palmer with the Architecture Group, uh K T G Y, and I'm project manager on the project. I wanted to share this rendering that was also as part of our um submittal package cuz I felt like it spoke a little bit better to that um the condition along the street frontage. There's actually a parkway um between the curb and the sidewalk um before the sidewalk, and then the back of sidewalk is where that um that four feet is being measured from. So actually from um curb face to the building face is um over sixteen feet. So I I felt like the rendering showed it a little bit better from this angle um in order to show that, you know, not not right up against that uh street printage.
Thank you so much. I think this um helps a lot to understand the distance. By any chance, do you have the rendering of the entrance to the building that's on the front page?
I have that, or I don't know if the city wants to pull that up. I can share my screen if I'm able to do that.
It looks like you may have to share it with me, Megan. Would you send it over?
Yes, I can do that. And you're referencing the um the rendering that was shared previously with the group?
There was an updated one you wanted to share, a a separate one?
Uh no, I I think that the commissioner was was asking if you had a a rendering that showed where the entrance, you know, into the apartments would be, how that would look from the front.
And that was the same one that was shared previously that I think inspired the comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right there.
This one, yeah. So um so the pathway to enter from the sidewalk to the main entrance would be um all concrete, right?
Yes, but there is a uh parkway that extends all along the street frontage, and maybe that's a little bit deceiving about um this rendering.
Hmm.
But in the the project site plan, like we go down to the um landscape plans and the and the civil plans, there is a um a parkway, a green landscaped region that extends along the whole length of the project frontage. So in between curb, there is um planter and then sidewalk, and then additional planter, and then the building frontage.
But, okay, but as far as, I think that the question was, so if people are on the sidewalk, let's just say walking down the sidewalk and they wanna go into the building, and it looks like that front door has recessed a little bit from the front, from the face of the building, um that would be kind of a concrete walkway from the sidewalk to the front of the building, Megan?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think that that answers your question.
It does. Yeah, as long as um, you know, it doesn't create any, you know, like you said before, right? People should not be congregating there, but if there is, usually I see um, you know, poles that, things like that, that you can put to prevent
Yeah.
car vehicles from endangering where heavy traffic might be. Car vehicles from endangering where heavy traffic might be, heavy food traffic might be.
Yeah, and it also looked, you know, I mean, and I just kind of realized it as I was looking at that elevation. It looks like that opening area is fairly large, right? So it's not just like a single door, it's double doors with windows on the side. So you might have, you know, like a fifteen foot wide, you know, kind of like patio area, you know, kind of in the front, you know, behind the sidewalk.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
One quick question. What is the projected completion date?
Yeah, so this came up when we were doing the original building. And from start to finish, it's about two years. And then your next question is going to be, you know, well, when are we going to start? And, you know, the goal from Waterford is to start in quarter one of 2026. So we'd still have to go through the, you know, they have to do the improve, assuming that everything, you know, gets approved, you know, or recommended for approval by planning commission, city council approves it. They're working with the state on particular funding, and then they have to work with, obviously, the building department and engineering for their working drawings, if you will, the final kind of plans.
Okay. Thank you. One last question. Why did you go from six levels to five?
So that was the preference of this developer. And and I will say that it's less expensive, and so money is always, you know, kind of an issue to kind of look at. Interestingly enough, when we did the EIR for the original project a year ago that got approved, there was one significant impact that could not be mitigated. So the council had to do overriding consideration, and that was the height of the six-story building. So I'd like to also think that by lowering it, we're taking away, you know, that significant impact that couldn't be mitigated, which is a good thing.
I'll chime in again if you don't mind. There's also the neighboring townhomes are three and stories and above. And so it fits in better with the the neighboring community, I think. So that was also a consideration in trying to reduce the height.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Jay has any comments?
I do have a comment regarding, well, going back to the the parking impact. So in the event that parking becomes a concern, I would want to at least propose to the project owners to consider, you know, like some sort of agreement with the adjacent commercial buildings because they're pretty much empty at night. So that might help to mitigate some of the parking impact. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, that's a good point. Any other comments before we go for a motion?
I did want to clarify the Park in Luffy. So the city council, when we went originally went to city council back on November seventh, 2023, we did have the correct number in there, which is three point nine million approximately. So that number should be adjusted. So we should, yeah. Because the that original number is the number that was presented to the planning commission prior to, but we adjusted, we fixed the number before city council. So we'll go back to that number, three point nine.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we can move forward. Do we have somebody motion to recommend this project to the city council?
Commissioner Gupta, before you proceed to motions, I know you did call for public comment. I think then we had the rendering, which might have gotten us from having a clear statement of if there are any public comments. So it might be beneficial to both make sure that we take a clear call for there being no public comments and then to close the public hearing by motion.
Okay, thank you. So are there any looks, if there any public comments, this is the last call for that. If not, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second. Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Commissioner Vice Chair Holkins?
Aye.
Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion then to recommend this project to the city council. Can we have motion to recommend?
I propose that we adopt resolution number twenty five dash zero zero three, recommending that the city council approve site development permit amendment number SA two four dash zero 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 five and the density bonus permit number DB twenty four dash zero 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 two, subject to the findings and conditions of approval.
I second.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Vice Chair Holkins?
Aye.
Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We forward to new business. There is a study session for comprehensive zoning ordinance update. Presentation from project manager Holly Pearson. She remote, yeah.
Here we go. Good evening. I apologize for the delay. Good evening, commissioners. Holly Pearson, project manager for the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Update. Yeah, as is listed on your agenda, this is a study session for the second phase of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Update. You will recall, we had a previous study session back in late August, which was more of a conceptual study session, talking about policy topics and sort of more broadly. This is a big milestone in the zoning update project. We're very pleased to bring before you the actual public review draft of the updated zoning ordinance in its entirety. And that is the the focus of the study session. We have a presentation from our consultant, Jen Marillo from Lisa Wise Consulting. I'll let her take the time for the presentation. But just wanted to mention that this is quite, it's a it's a four hundred and thirty page draft of the entire zoning ordinance, so it's very content heavy. We're trying to focus on what we think are the the key topics, the most important topics. Feel free to ask questions about those and anything else that you may have seen in in the draft itself. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Jen. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Jen Marillo with LWC. Next slide. For this presentation, I'm going to run through just an overview of the project and the outreach that we've done. But I'm going to focus the presentation on a summary of the draft that you have before you, both on the draft ordinance and on the map. Then I want to briefly cover the input we've received on the draft so far and close with next steps. Next slide, please. So we are focused on a handful of primary objectives for this project. We are aiming to modernize the city's ordinance, make it more user friendly. We are ensuring that there is consistency across all the applicable city policy documents with the code, namely the general plan. We are also looking to promote compact mixed-use and transit-oriented development types where that's appropriate, while also protecting existing single-family neighborhoods. These objectives were reflected in a background and recommendations report we published early on in this project back in July of 2023. And that report has served for the foundation, as the foundation for this project as we've been working through it over the last couple of years. Next slide. This project is a two and a half year project. We identified two specific phases. The first phase of this project was an expedited phase where we established new zoning districts to implement the updated general plan and metro-specific plan. That phase of the project has been completed. Those new zones are in effect today. So we're now focused on the second phase of this effort, and that is the comprehensive code update. We are now at the stage of having the draft available publicly, as Holly mentioned, and we are starting these study sessions to get planning commission and council feedback. We are aiming for completion of this project in summer of this year. Next slide. And we've held a couple of study sessions with the planning commission over the last couple of years. We held the first study session in fall of 2023. There, we talked about that initial background review and recommendations report. We also talked about those new zones that were established in the first phase of the project. The next meeting, fall of last year, we talked about selected policy topics that were items we expected to see change or be kind of critical issues as we work through this comprehensive update. And we also talked about some public feedback from a community survey that we had conducted. So tonight, the focus is now on the public review draft that is available for discussion. Next slide. In addition to these study sessions, we've had a series of different types of outreach we've offered. We've had a technical advisory committee with city staff. We held interviews with stakeholders. We had a zoning advisory group meeting. That group held five meetings. Those were public meetings. We've held a couple of community workshops. We've done focus group meetings. We did an online survey, and city staff has also been available for virtual office hours. So we're really trying to provide a lot of different formats and avenues for people to be involved and provide comment. And all of the information on the project and the outreach is available on the website, milpitaszoningupdate.org. Next slide. So this full, full or the comprehensive zoning ordinance update was prepared based on the feedback we've heard from the community over the last couple of years. And it was published in December, an early Christmas gift to the city. We published the comprehensive zoning ordinance at December eighteenth. And we wanted to provide ample opportunity for public comment. As Holly mentioned, this is a large document, so we are offering public feedback through March seventh. And after the close of this public review period, we're going to take the comments received, consider those, make revisions to the draft, and then bring a revised draft back before the commission for consideration for a recommendation to council for adoption. Next slide. When we go through this process of comprehensively updating a zoning code, one of our main goals is to make sure it is user-friendly, that it is intuitively organized and logically structured. In this case, we found the opportunity to look at shifting where the zoning regulations are in the current municipal code. So what we have done is we have shifted zoning out from its current location in the city's municipal code, which is currently in title eleven, into its own title, title thirteen. This allows us to establish a new numbering system and structure that allows for modification and amendments over time that can be seamless and consistent with content and allows it to be just overall easier to use and administer. The ordinance is also organized into five parts, so grouped based on content. And those parts are are lettered A through E for ease of use. Next slide. As we identified in our recommendations report, our overall approach is to ensure this update is logical, that the definitions, that the land uses are updated, that they're modernized, that we have across the board clarified and simplified content standards and procedures. And in that regard, we have included more tables, simple graphics, clear graphics, to make sure that they supplement the standards and illustrate standards effectively. Of course, of critical importance, too, is incorporating legally mandated requirements and standards. Next slide. With this update, with the first phase, as you may recall, we did update the city zoning map. And when we went through this comprehensive update, we did identify that there were a few items that were still appropriate to make changes to to reflect the comprehensive ordinance. Namely, this is to eliminate some of the zoning overlays. We found that there are more effective ways to address what those overlays were trying to accomplish, or those overlays were simply outdated, not used, or not effective. One example of that is that we replaced the mobile home park overlay with a base zone, just a base zone for mobile home park. Now, we didn't make any changes to the new zones that were adopted in phase one, that were adopted last year. So that's the new metro-specific plan zones, the business park, research and development zone, the southwest employment area. So there are no changes there. There are also no changes to the hillside area. The hillside combining district is being preserved. And also, the town center zone was incorporated here as it exists today. There is a separate effort, the Housing Opportunity Districts, the HOD project, that is underway. That project is separate, so we are not, that project is separate from this. We are not incorporating that into this update. Next slide. Another big change is looking at the land uses, how those are allowed, and and consolidating and updating those to eliminate uses that are redundant, that are outdated in terms of looking at best practices and how land use changes, evolves. We want to make sure that this code can withstand the test of time, that it can address uses that we are not thinking about now, but will be in place in four, five, eight years. So we looked at, we did a substantial effort with city staff to take the existing uses allowed and looking at how we can consolidate those, reclassify them, redefine them more appropriately, so we can have that flexibility, but but certainty in terms of when uses are allowed and how. A couple of examples of those are that are community assembly type uses, where the city has a handful of uses now that fall in that category. But really, what's important is understanding different levels of intensity of community assembly and how those are permitted and what the parking requirements are and what the approval would need to be. Similarly, with retail, it's just not necessary to have itemized specifics of different types of retail stores. We can have general merchandise for retail stores and permit them accordingly. This this approach also allows us to accommodate some legal requirements that we need to reflect in how uses are allowed and permitted. Next slide. Another effort we worked really closely with city staff on was to look at how we could streamline, where we could take uses today that maybe require planning commission approval and ways that we could lower the permit level necessary, where it was appropriate. You know, we took, we took a hard look at this to see where it would make sense, and it would differ across different zones. In this case, we have an example from the C two zone where hotels, medical and dental clinic require a conditional use permit now with planning commission approval and that were proposed in the ordinance to allow those to be just permitted. That also applies for site development permits, opportunities where we could lower the review authority. We took the opportunity to do that, and in some cases exempting certain types of projects from site development review, like a new fence. Next slide. Parking, we've talked about a lot over the last couple of years, and it is an important part of the code. It's a very important part to implement the city's vision and policies in the general plan, also to be consistent with the city's climate action plan. The approach we've taken for parking is to reduce The approach we've taken for parking is to reduce parking, but make those reductions in a moderate fashion. So we want to be reasonable and appropriate to Milpetas context, but we also want to be in line with where the city's vision is going. Here is an example of some uses and how we've proposed reductions. So you'll see, for example, a two-bedroom, single-family home currently requires two spaces per unit. Well, we wanted to have the opportunity if someone comes in with a smaller, single-family home, say, a home under 900 square feet, that maybe that type of home only needs one parking space and not two. So we provided the threshold of a smaller, two-bedroom home to only have one space. Similar approach with three-bedroom units, where we have a gradient requirement for parking. So not all three-bedroom, single-family homes require two spaces per unit. Smaller ones maybe have two, larger ones maybe have three. Similar approach for multifamily residences, again, looking at those smaller units that also provide the opportunity for more naturally affordable housing to have a lower parking requirement. Now, this doesn't, this is a minimum requirement. So this doesn't mean that this is the maximum a developer can provide. A developer can provide more parking, and often they do, based on who their customer is, who the buyer is, what price point they're trying to achieve. So this is only the minimum that would be required. A developer could provide more. And only in certain cases is there a maximum limit to parking, and that is specific to areas around transit and the metro-specific plan, which is outlined in that adopted specific plan. Next slide. So we also wanted to be considerate of the fact that parking is proposed to be moderately reduced and how to balance that. So there are other methods that the code is using to support alternative forms of transportation, including bicycling. There is comprehensive bicycle parking proposed, both for short-term and long-term. So like, long-term storage of bicycles, and that is proposed citywide. There are also alternative parking strategies that are included. For the last item, there was a discussion about, well, maybe overflow parking could occur on the commercial property next door that doesn't have anyone parking at night. So we are looking at those strategies being reflected in the zoning ordinance, allowing for reduced parking when you have car share, you're providing electric vehicle charging or additional bicycle parking that we're trying to encourage. And then lastly, transportation demand management is incorporated, which requires that for certain projects, larger projects, that they incorporate actual measures into the project that reduce the amount of vehicle trips generated. So there's a menu of options provided in the code, and those can include things like transit pass subsidies, actual improvements to the pedestrian and bicycle network. It can include a car share program, a carpool program. Next slide. The code also includes incentives, and incentives reflect some that are mandatory, required by law, such as the affordable housing density bonus and parking requirements. That is reflected. There are also programs that are reflected from your housing elements. So for incentives for larger affordable rental units, three-bedroom units that are affordable to lower income, wanting to encourage those and allow incentives for those, as well as consolidating lots so that they can be assembled into larger parcels, properties that are more conducive to facilitating multifamily housing. The types of incentives, reduction in setbacks, reduction in common open space requirements, some reduction in guest parking are proposed. There is also an incentive, a non-mandatory incentive for sustainable buildings. So buildings that exceed the minimum green building code energy efficiency standards, those would be eligible for streamlined approval. And that was based on feedback that we heard from, I believe, the commission as well as members of the public. Next slide. A couple other sections of the code that are getting pretty substantial changes. Landscaping, really just kind of flushed out more fully to provide the city with comprehensive landscape standards, being very clear about where it's required to be landscaped and the associated standards for that landscaping, including parking lots, shade trees, things of that nature. And then the sign standards. The sign standards have been revised to reflect legal requirements of not regulating based on the message or the content of the sign. And with that, we had the opportunity to look at a reorganization, modernizing the standards and including simple and clear graphics to illustrate the different sign types and accompanying standards. Next slide. We also provided an opportunity to really link the allowed uses to standards that are specific to individual uses. So in this case, you see a snapshot from a use table in the draft ordinance, and you can see in highlight sections that then provide additional standards that are specific to that use. So in the use table, you can see what permit level is required and then where to go to find additional standards for that use. And so some of these types of uses are drive-throughs, where we wanted to address kind of the condition and interface with the pedestrian environment. Accessory dwelling units, those are very heavily regulated by state law, but are reflected. Home occupations, eating and drinking establishments. There are many standards specific to certain uses in the new ordinance. Next slide. And then we also added design standards for single-family residential. This is one housing type that the city doesn't currently have objective design standards for. So we had the opportunity to fold in some. And in this case, it was very clear that we wanted these new standards to be applicable only to newly constructed, single-family homes, not existing. We don't want to create any non-conformities. And some of the standards are looking at the level of detail and design on exterior walls, how the homes are oriented to be, having entrances visible from the street where that's practical, having weather-protected entrances, some privacy standards for second stories that are close to property lines, and then looking at durable exterior building materials as well. Next slide. And wrapping up here, thank you for your time. The procedures and administration, kind of the last key item that we reflected in the updated code is kind of a major point of change, is again, really focused on streamlining. We wanted the procedures to be clear and transparent to the public, to the applicant, and also easy for staff to administer. So we have a consistent structure that permits and approvals are outlined with. And then we added a couple new permits. We added a minor deviations approval that provides more certainty and consistency to allow for opportunities to deviate from standards in the ordinance without going through a conditional use permit at planning commission that didn't really have any thresholds for what the limitation could be. We added a temporary use permit and procedures for planned unit development, which is fairly common, but procedures actually weren't outlined. Next slide. So we held two meetings in January, a community workshop and a zoning advisory group meeting to talk about this draft. And we heard that there was interest in preserving or adding regulations that supported business, that streamlined review and permitting. We heard the importance of preserving that hillside district, which we are doing. And we heard that there should be a focus of presenting the ordinance in a way that describes how the update would be beneficial to the public, and we are aiming to do that. The importance of encouraging alternative forms of transportation was emphasized, and to be able to support reduced parking requirements. And then it was acknowledged the city should update supplemental materials like the ADU guidebook and the fee schedule to be consistent with this update, which is the city's plan. Next slide. So for tonight, we are looking for the commission's input in terms of what you think works well with this draft. If there's anything that you think is unclear, would benefit from some additional explanation or improvement, anything that you think could be modified, added, removed. And also, if there's anything, any topics not covered that in the presentation you think we should emphasize or focus on as we move forward to hearings, we would greatly appreciate that as well. Next slide. So with that, we do have a council study session scheduled for March 4th to hear from the council about any feedback they have on this draft. And as I mentioned, we will take the feedback that we hear during this public review period, which ends on March 7th, and incorporate that into the draft, and then bring the draft back to you for a hearing and a recommendation to council. If there's any questions or anyone wants to speak to planning staff, they are offering virtual office hours that you can sign up for on the website, milpetazoningupdate.org. The next slide. I think that is it for us. Thank you so much for your time. We're happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? I have a couple of questions. Nobody else said yes yet. So first of all, I'm happy to know that you have reduced the permitting levels. That's a very positive change. I assume that that means that the overall permit time will be reduced significantly? I mean, is that the implication or that's a good assumption?
Yes, we hope, it wouldn't, that wouldn't be the case across the board uniformly, but for the projects that have been sort of demoted to a lower, I don't, I don't know if lower is quite the word I want to use, but to a, you know, I guess it is lower, lower level of review. It would be, not only the permit fees would be lower and the review time tends to be lower. And yes, so those projects would be easier for applicants to get through the approval process. There are other types of projects that would still go through the same process as they currently do and would be subject to the same permits.
Okay, thank you. And also, I'm a little bit confused between Housing Opportunity District and Zoning Update. Are there any conflicting guidelines between the two?
I will give my best response to that. I may ask Director Lee to also chime in as he's overseeing both ultimately. But the zoning ordinance update, so as you all know, you voted on this a few months, or I guess a year ago, but we created a couple of new zoning districts as part of a comprehensive zoning update. Those came out of the general plan. But this phase of the comprehensive zoning update is really, it's about the text of the zoning ordinance. There are a few minor map changes, but they're very minor. They have to do with overlay zones. So it's really, as Jen described very eloquently in her presentation, it's about improving and modernizing the text of the zoning ordinance. The Housing Opportunity Districts is an effort that came out and had a separate impetus, which I think Director Lee can talk about if you would like to hear that. But it's focused on certain geographical areas of the city, and it's really about encouraging housing development in certain areas of the city. So it's really, again, it's geographically focused and it's about actual changes to what would be, what could be developed on certain sites. But Director Lee, if you could expand on that, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Holly. I'd be happy to. So for the Housing Opportunity Districts, we received a grant to start that work. But both these efforts are to implement the general plan. And the general plan identified two new land use designations, the Neighborhood Commercial Mixed Use and the Business Park Research and Development. Phase 1 of this comprehensive zoning ordinance update implemented the Business Park and Research and Development, along with all the new metro zoning districts. We purposefully left out the Housing Opportunity Districts or the Neighborhood Commercial Mixed Use zoning districts from that effort because we had already started it. We started it actually before, we started the HODs before this project because we received a grant from the state. So these are two completely separate projects. But ultimately, both the goal, both of these projects have the primary goal of implementing the general plan. But they are not, they are not related to one another.
So they are not conflicting in any way, right? I mean, in terms of the guidelines?
Not the guidelines, because the Housing Opportunity Districts focus on specific areas, and the comprehensive zoning ordinance update is not changing the standards for those areas. But some citywide standards will apply, like, but yeah.
Okay, and one more question. When you talk, in your table, you showed different permitting levels, and some of them are written as P, which means permitted. That means there's no permit required for those, which says P?
It means that the use would be permitted by right. It doesn't, there could be other types of permits required. Oftentimes, a site development permit is required. So it doesn't mean that the city has no discretionary review. It just means that the use itself is allowed without a discretionary review of the use.
Oh, okay. One of the categories is MCS, which is Mobile Food Park, requires only minor conditional use permit. Since I'm kind of promoting food parks in the city a little bit, so that means any food truck park in the city will only need MCS. Doesn't matter what they have inside the park in terms of the infrastructure.
I'm sorry, which zoning district are you looking at the table for that where it requires a minor conditional use permit?
In your, in your table of different permit levels, one of the categories is Mobile Food Park?
In the, Jen, in the presentation, is that one of the tables that you showed on the slide, I'm assuming?
No, you showed on the slide also.
Yeah.
The mobile food, I'm so sorry, thank you, Chair. The mobile food park is, was not in the presentation.
Oh, in the staff report, potentially?
But I think.
Okay.
But I know that the mobile food park, for example, in the mixed-use zones, mobile food park requires an MCS, which is a minor conditional use permit approved by the director, for example.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the one I was talking about. My question is, will MCS still be sufficient in respect of the other amenities and infrastructure within a mobile food park?
I would say that is a good question, and that's up for consideration. We are certainly open to considering whether the permit level, as included in the draft, is appropriate for given uses. So if the commission feels that a use such as the mobile food park should be subject to a planning commission review, we can certainly change that to a full conditional use permit.
I mean, I'm not certainly advocating that. I'll be happy with MCS because food truck parks are normally temporary in nature. They're not going to be there for a long, long time. So keeping that in view, I think you want to minimize the permit level and the overall times taken to issue the permit.
Oh, I see. I think I understand your question better now, if I may. My apologies if I wasn't directly answering what you were getting at. So through the minor site development permit process, the city staff would review the, would review the site plan. You know, it shows the food, how the food trucks would be placed on the site, where any parking would be, where any other amenities like tables. And so the, not infrastructure in the sense of, you know, power to the site or things like that, but the onsite facilities and amenities, those would be reviewed at the staff level. And unless there was something proposed that perhaps the director deemed would warrant escalating, is that the right word? There's a procedure in the code where the director can refer something up to the planning commission. But in most cases, that would be reviewed at the staff. the director can refer something up to the planning commission, but in most cases, that would be reviewed at the staff level. If I'm under, if I I hope I understood your question.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah. Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions. Are there any other questions?
I do. I have several questions. The first one is regarding parking. The calculation of the proposed parking requirement is that specifically for covered parking? Or does that include driveway, especially for the single family residences?
Please, Jen, go ahead. I was gonna ask you to.
If I may, yeah, it would include adequate driveway space. I believe the dimension is nine by 18. I believe if there is that space available in the driveway, that that would count as a parking space. But there is still the same requirement for one covered parking space as well.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand this, like, for example, the reduction that you have proposed for two bedroom going from two spaces to one bedroom, oh, sorry, one, two spaces to one space. The project owner would meet the requirement if they have no garage and just one driveway? Is that how I should understand this proposal? Or would that still require them to build one garage?
Still, where they would still have to provide that one space covered.
All right, I see. So even if they have additional uncovered parking, it would not meet the requirement that might, I mean, it may serve the the need, but they would still be required to build covered parking?
That is how it, the draft reads. So if if you have any feedback on that, please let us know.
Yeah, cuz I am thinking that if we can maybe clarify it, like, for example, the two spaces per unit that we have today, if we are gonna reduce it to one space, I think giving them the option of having one covered and one uncovered parking would help reduce a lot of the concerns that I read from the public, cuz I do see a lot of the, from the zoning administration group meeting as well as from the community workshop, parking seems to be a key point, a key concern. So my suggestion is to maybe clarify how we can incorporate uncovered parking to meet the parking needs.
Thank you.
And then still on the subject of parking, there is this TDM, transportation demand management proposal. It sounds like this is just a guideline, wanting any project, you know, kind of project owners to consider and make suggestions of how they're gonna meet it. But do we have any objective criteria to measure whether the TDM that is being proposed meets the needs?
And if I may, that's a great question. The way that the TDM section is drafted is mandatory, not optional. It is mandatory for the projects that are identified as significant enough in size to trigger that. So there are thresholds for residential, commercial and others that would require compliance with the TDM standards. There are certain components of a TDM plan that are mandatory for every project that triggers a TDM plan. Some of that includes providing information to residents or employees about transit service, about bicycling, walking, etc. And then projects are also required to incorporate at least one additional TDM strategy, which they can select, but that we have provided a menu of in the in the draft. Now, we we have talked to the to staff about this, that I think this is one of the places that will will warrant some circling back to, right? Like in terms of letting this kind of roll out and see how it how it is working and to be able to monitor it and then make adjustments over time to ensure that you are meeting the reduction of vehicle trips that you are looking for. But there isn't a separate traffic engineered study and analysis that is going through specific metrics or a detailed point system in this in this case. But it could evolve to that over time based on the city's kind of monitoring effort and how it how it is is used.
So it sounds like the burden will fall onto the city as well to make sure that the proposed TDM and the implementation of it will work. So how does that impact increase in staffing needs to support this new comprehensive zoning change? And along the way, I'm also talking about the impact on staff as we streamline some of the permit approvals? What impact on staffing will it have?
That really is an excellent question, and I'm glad you raised it, Commissioner Kong. I I we did talk with Director Lee and we we talked at some length about that before we when we were doing the administrative draft and we were considering the TDM provisions, wanted to make sure that it was realistic, that it was feasible and practicable for the city to dedicate staff resources to implementing this. We we felt that, you know, it will cause, it will create some additional work for staff on these larger projects. And we felt that given the mandates in the general plan and the climate action plan and other policies, that this is that that those increases in work are warranted, that this is something that the city wants, that this is a direction the city wants to go. Perhaps Director Lee can add anything about, kind of more specific about about staffing or staff resources? I don't know if there's something you have, you can say at this time about that.
Yes, I would, yes, I would like to speak on that. I'll talk about the TDM and the enforcement and implementation of that first. Some cities, if perhaps larger cities with more resources, or if you've had a TDM plan for a very long time, and there are many projects now that have a TDM program, some cities will elect to create a transportation management agency that would be responsible for enforcing and making sure and monitoring and the collecting data and seeing if it's working, all the things that you're mentioning. So that is a great question. I think for our city, especially as we start out, I think our goal would be to minimize burden on staff by putting as much of the onus on applicants. So putting the onus on them to be the ones to provide us the information that we want to see, so we can review, you know, whether it's working or, yeah, to see if they're actually doing what they said they would do. So although it's taking a little bit more of a passive approach and not necessarily a proactive approach, I do think that's the best way to get as much implementation with minimal impact to staff. So I think that's where we could start and as as Jen mentioned and Holly mentioned, like, as time goes on, we can adjust depending on how how that goes. And then for the the impact of generally reducing, like lowering the permitting level for certain types of projects, I don't think it'll have a major impact. What I, I mean, it will be, it will help in that it may free up a little bit of time where a project, when we try to, when we go to a hearing, like planning commissioner, city council, it takes a lot more staff time to prepare everything, but in terms of the type of analysis we do, that would remain much the same. We may have a little more time to put efforts in other things, or it may allow us to process other permits a little more quickly, just because we have a little bit more free time, but also we we didn't lower the permitting requirements too drastically, and we didn't want to do it across the board. We were very selective and careful in how we did that. So I don't, I don't think it's it's a major, major change. But in either way, I think it's it's a good thing for staff where we'll have a little more capacity to work on other things.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, I'm glad that you were able to, you know, kind of foresee that this is gonna gonna help staffing as well and reduce the burden on resources. Thank you. And then last one, it's something that just caught my eye from when you were presenting the single family residential design standards. The patio size requirement. As we have, you know, higher and higher density projects being proposed, some of the single family homes that are like three story high, do they really have the land area to support a 40 square feet patio? I'm just asking, you know, from, if you have gotten feedback from the builders as well, if this is something that they can support, given that many of the new newer single family homes have very small lot sizes.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that's an excellent comment, and that is something I think we will, we will follow up on. Because I do think that is worth taking a another look at because I I agree, there are definitely some new smaller single family home types that may not be able to accommodate that. And we want to, we we want to make sure that these standards are are workable. So that's a great comment and we'll follow up on that one.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Are there any other comments or feedback? If not, I think there is nothing that really concludes the study session. And
Sorry, Chair Gupta, a public comment.
Oh, okay. Yeah, all right. A public comment for the for this topic? Yeah.
Chair Gupta, there are no speaker cards for this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can can we have a motion to close the public comments?
I'll make the motion to close public comment.
I'll second it.
Please.
Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Vice Chair Holkins?
Aye.
Chair Gupta? And Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, and I I should have caught it. So for public hearing items, you have to open and you have to close a public hearing by motion. This, however, wasn't an item that required a public hearing. All items require a public comment, but those two things are different.
Good. I'm learning.
That that's also, I should have, I should have stepped in on the procedure there. I apologize. I did belatedly.
Thank you. So is there any other types of new business or anything else that anyone, anybody wants to bring up?
Commissioner, sorry, Chair Gupta, it's beneficial to read the advisement at the end about any person agreed by any final decision before adjourning the meeting.
All right, so any person agreed by any final decision of any, any board, commission or department head to the city of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the city council by filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within 12 calendar days of the date of this, date of said decision and paying the required fee. This time limit shall be strictly enforced. Can we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second. Commissioner Kong?
Aye.
Vice Chair Holkins?
Aye.
Chair Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Thank you.